I'm going to call back to order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee, January 15th, 2015, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I will just remind everybody again that our meeting is being recorded, and respectfully ask that you silence your cellphones. There is no public, so we will skip public comment tonight. There is also no recognition, and the students have not shown, so we will -- and there is no consent agenda, so we are going to jump right to the Chair's report. And the Chair's report is that I am happy to announce -- can I announce it now?
Yes.
I can, right?
Under oath.
Okay. I'm happy to announce that the school committee met an executive session to vote on the superintendent's contract. We will again vote later in the meeting on that contract, but we do anticipate that that will be completed at the end of this meeting tonight. And we will probably delay our old business of the superintendent's contract in case we have a guest appearance, depending upon weather right now.
Weather and traffic conditions.
Weather and traffic conditions, thank you. And then we will jump to the superintendent's report.
I've been out, as you know, so although it's nice to have Internet and email, it's -- there's a lot of stuff I do miss. The only thing I'm reflecting on for the superintendent's report is it's really great to have a good team. And you'll see the results of that tonight in the budget proposal. But it's amazing how, at one point in time last week, I was out, Gillie was out, and Jim was out, and it just shows you that Bev runs everything. And, no, seriously, it's really nice how everybody pitches in, checks in, and principals saying, "What can I do?", that sort of thing, and it's -- you're speaking about a new superintendent coming in, and it's a real gift to a new superintendent when you have a high-functioning team that is there to work with her and support her and to learn the new ropes of this district. So I wish I didn't have my accident, but it was -- it's comforting to know that when you're not able to be there, there's plenty of people on the team to put forth their best effort and to get things done, so I'm highly appreciative of that.
All right.
With that said, your absence, as with the rest of the school representatives, were sorely missed. We did the best we could.
Yeah.
We muddled along.
Well, we deferred a number of things for today. Coming back up, we're going to jump into old business, and we are going to pause on the superintendent's contract for now, and are going to jump into the second reading and approval of the 2015-2016 school calendar. And I would entertain a motion for discussion.
Move to accept the school calendar as presented in our packet.
Seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Discussion, right?
Discussion, sorry, sorry.
I just have -- I wanted to reiterate a question that we got last time about having the early release days on the calendar. Because, and I mean, one answer could be, we're still trying to figure out what they -- what we want them to be, I understand that, but I guess I'd like to know when they would end up on the calendar, because, again, families need to plan for that, right? It's a planning issue as much as anything, you know? They need to know if they need to have coverage or daycare, whatever they, you know, whatever they need to do. So I was just -- that's my question. We'd asked before, and I don't --
That was one of the things that we repeated by last week without --
Do you have any idea on those one-hour early releases?
We can just set a time. It's about sitting down with a leadership team and going over that and reviewing how this would work. I mean, if mid-March, we'd get plenty of time for due notice for people, so I would say we could have that organized by mid-March.
So I'm sorry, mid-March would be when we would know when the half-days are?
Yeah.
The not-half days?
No, they're early releases, so they're only one-hour early releases. We have the full days in there.
Yes.
Because those impact the beginning and end of school, which is the purpose of voting the calendar anyways.
Yeah, and I think we received some strong feedback that that alignment of the early release days with the other traditional holidays that we are not having as days off would be highly desirable. And my question is, do we have to vote this schedule now, before we see those on the calendar, knowing full well that we're trying to move the approval of the calendar early in the process, so people know what to do and when they're going to do it? Or can we get the release days committed to earlier so that we can see that that is or is not part of the schedule?
All right. I would, since I wasn't here, I would only ask, what's the rationale for those days for the traditional religious holidays becoming an early release day? Because you're only talking an hour, and it has really no impact on the religious day itself, other than maybe people thinking there's one less hour of --
Less stuff going on.
Class to miss if I choose to take that religious holiday.
Yeah, but my sense is that the public comment, and I can understand fully, that you're making a difficult decision between go to school or observe your religious observances, and by having an early release day on the days that that would be impacted, it may be possible to accommodate both requests.
We'll go look at that.
Okay.
I think the challenge with that, as we talked about last week, is this is one of those odd years where it is, both of them fall within midweek. In many years, at least one of them falls on a Saturday or a Sunday. And this year, if I'm reading the calendar correctly, the Jewish calendar, it is the 14th and 23rd.
Of October.
Of September.
Of September, yeah.
And so the challenge that I think that that faces is, you know, perhaps coming back on the 8th, having four full days, and then immediately going back out that first Monday for a potential one-hour half -- one-hour early release or a half-day, and kind of interrupting a little bit of that momentum of starting the school year.
Several years ago, when we started this discussion, that was Ms. Worrin's point, was there was no sort of continuous education in September, because we had all these various holidays and various activities, so students didn't settle down into their routine until well into October, and that just was a challenge for everybody, teachers and students alike. So by going back to that, by stuffing those back in there, right, we're just putting that problem back into September.
Yeah, and I'll just echo the superintendent's comments, that it's an hour early release. It's not a full day.
Yeah.
We can examine those and come back for that, but, of course, again, I got to emphasize the emphasis, the point of setting the calendar is the first day of school, the end, the last day of school, that's, yeah.
I appreciate that operationally, but I think for, you know, the families, there's a little more to it about what happens in between those days, that there's, you know, there's interest and concern.
Yep.
Something.
If the calendar is updated with those earlier releases, would we have to then vote on it again?
Actually, no.
No.
Okay.
I'm just checking, Good Friday, it is?
25th.
March 25th. It is a Friday, you're right.
Can we do early release on Friday?
Thank you. There you go.
Can we do an early release on a Friday?
We can do an early release on any day.
Okay.
We didn't have a great experience with doing them on Fridays when we did it two years ago, but those were the half-days, those weren't the one-hour early releases.
Okay.
It's very early this year.
Mr. McDevitt, we, could we approve this contingent upon the superintendent getting, providing a calendar to us by, pick a date, March 15th, some date, right?
Can I suggest something?
Yeah.
Because you can approve the calendar, what you're doing is approving the beginning and the end. You can, I can come back, and besides the fact that we never used to do the calendar
This early.
This early, or even by the end of March.
Yeah.
I could come back mid-March and say, okay, this is what we're looking at as far as organizing our PD and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
It's not up to the school committee to say yes or no to that, but, you know, it's about having that discussion about what we're trying to achieve and the purpose of the early release days and how we're organizing them. It wouldn't, the approval of the calendar isn't contingent upon that whatsoever.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
And I think when, we got three decisions, right? One is, you know, recast the query, recast the survey, find out if there's a different opinion than what we received a couple of years ago when we made the decision to remove the religious holidays from the school calendar. Decision two could be to approve as-is, or decision three is to table it until we have either more information or, you know, a better feel for how the proposed early release days impact or don't impact, you know, the family relationship of the schools.
To be perfectly honest, I mean, I feel like we have queried. It was only a little more than, or a little under two years ago, I mean, almost 80 percent basically said that they did not want the religious days.
I think we have good data to substantiate what we did before. I guess I'm questioning, do we need to do anything differently? I don't think so, but I do want to just put that to the --
Well, I think your suggestion, Mr. Gross, is trying to reach some accommodation, which is to move some early release days to those days to give those students and families a little bit more time.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's trying to be a little bit more flexible on our part or the administration's part. I think we're trying to do that, and I think that's a good, you know, gesture, you know, to try to, you know, understand that there are issues here, and so I'm good with that.
Okay.
So, you know, my suggestion would be that we go ahead and vote this calendar with a, you know, and take up the superintendent on his offer to come back mid-March with more of this laid out, and we'll take a look at it.
I think the one thing that I just want to add is there was considerable confusion, if I might use that word, with teachers and assignments on those days, and a number of teachers who were planning on giving assignments and then someone at the last minute said, "Oh, wait, I can, it's a religious holiday." So I think we need to make sure that our principals are very much aware of those dates and are making sure that their staff are as well. Not that you would be the one reminding the principals, but maybe you can leave it in your checklist of things to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was, that was in that survey that
Yes.
the school committee had done, saying that those would be the conditions if we did not have the religious holidays. That never went in the policy, but --
Right, right. That was clear feedback.
Yep.
Okay, I'm done.
Any additional discussion? Nope. I would now roll call vote. No?
You can do that.
No, I don't see any need to amend the proposal or amend the --
All right, so all in favor of approving as presented?
Aye.
2015-2016 calendar? Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. All opposed?
Any opposed? All right, so we are five to nothing in favor of that. C is the second reading of the approval of agreement with the Cambridge Institute of China Business Research, Research Incorporated. I know last week, Dr. Hutchinson, there were a number of questions that kind of came up as part of that conversation.
Yeah.
I know that people have kind of sent you some individual emails and some feedback, and I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
Okay.
As I put in my summary that I sent out to all members, I did have a conversation several weeks ago with our attorney. In her language, there were no Game Stoppers regarding, and all the points that she made and brought up, I addressed. I think there were a couple of issues regarding liability, and the piece about the liability is, keep in mind, there's two pieces to this program. One is the residential piece, and one's the academic piece. The academic piece is the one piece that we are in charge of. The Cambridge Group is in charge of the residential piece. They deal with that, they set that up individually with parents, they recruit parents to do it, we help them in the advertisement, so to speak, as far as getting the word out. But the contract that they have with the parents and as far the residential side of things, so that there's no liability to us as far as residential, it's no different than we take in the Rotary Exchange students. We don't even have a contract with them, we don't need a contract with them, because they come over with a visa, and they're living with a host family. So in essence, the Cambridge student, the Chinese students are coming over, living with a host parent that the Cambridge Group arranges for, and the Cambridge Group actually pays those host parents to be host parents. Since they're living here and they have a residency, and they have obtained the appropriate visa, then we can accept them into school, and we have the authority to do that as well. Now, based on the I-20 form, which they have to have, we hold the only, on the academic side, if they're expelled from the residence side, or if they do something in school, we can withdraw the I-20 form, they can't even appeal it, and therefore, there's, and the liability we have is no different than the liability we have for any other student that comes to our schools. This happens to be students that are in a formal program that provides residency for them, residence for them within North Andover. We are simply accepting them on the academic side of things and also reap the benefit of the Cambridge Group actually paying us for the educational side of things, so that was one piece. The expulsion piece, I think I just touched on it, was that if they are expelled for whatever reason, from school, we could just take the form, and they can't appeal it, they have to leave. And we basically have full control of that. And speaking with the group themselves, and there's a number of schools that do this as well, they say their biggest issues tend to be in the residential side, just because of living arrangements, people not seeing eye to eye necessarily, and they, and that has nothing to do with the schools. They simply may move kids within the town based on situations that occur. They also do a lot of work with parents, with the families, with meetings on a regular basis to help people navigate the situation of somebody else living in their household. As far as the other main points that Andrea talked about with me that I summarized for you, it's more about looking at the clarity. For instance, when it says naturally, if you're going to release student information, we have to have release forms so we can release that student information to the guardian parents. All of that's, we handle that on a regular basis in one situation or another, so that's why, when I spoke to her, she said there is no, there aren't any Game Stoppers, just pay attention to certain things, really.
One of the scenarios that was a little concerning that we talked about last week was if the student is of legal age in this country, and how does that impact both our responsibility and the way we can --
They're still on a visa. They're still on a visa.
Okay.
And they have the, they're only here attending school on that visa, based on the information we had. If they're supposedly cheating the system, whatever, we could pull that, we could pull the I-20 form, and they lose their privilege to be here, so.
You're meaning 18, correct?
Eighteen, right.
Yeah.
And things don't work out with the host family, and we're stuck in the middle of a --
They still need that form.
Yeah, okay.
And I think Dr. Scuzrell said they were roughly the equivalent of sophomores and juniors, so 15, 17.
Right, right, and I think we have approvals of each student as well, or the school department has approvals of each student.
Where does it say that?
It's in the contract.
I don't remember.
I'm not sure whether it's Brian.
I don't think it's in here.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
So we should add that as well.
I'll find it in a moment.
Okay, that'd be great.
Decision, school reserves the right of sole discretion to climb admission of any international student candidate, 1.6.
Where is it?
1.6, recruitment.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
A question I have, Dr. Hutchinson, is the contract is actually between three parties. There are three entities that sign this contract, and I'm not quite clear on who's responsible for what part, you know?
Okay, the Green Planet Group is their residential group? Is the group that just handles the residential part of it? When they came to meet with us, excuse me, the, there's one group that represents the, that helps out and supports the school in getting all the visa situation set, and that oversees the entire, you know, the works. There's the Green Planet Group, from my understanding, that is the group that's organized to support in Massachusetts the residential side. So they, they come in and they work with just the parents, the group, that side. What this contract, I got a, just so, I think somebody asked me the question, the timeliness of signing this contract is, of course, it's always up to your approval, but it is for the purpose of, they will not begin this process of marketing until we sign a contract. So the longer we wait, we're running the risk of them not being able to come in, meet with the high school, take all their photos, create their brochures, or whatever they do, and market with the Chinese groups. So, again, we don't have to do it next year, but we had, we had been working under that assumption, with a goal of five students, and the longer we wait, the longer that's put in jeopardy. But we, you need to be comfortable with the contract, so. And this is a standard, this is the contract, we've talked to a couple of other school systems, that this is what they do.
Just, a real small point, you know, there's, on the bottom of most of the pages here, it talks about this as a strictly private agreement. Well, if we sign it, that can't be the case, because --
We know that, and most of the reason this is for, this is just so that you can't use our contract and just put it out to somebody else. That's the reason for it.
If we were to sign this, it would become a public document.
It's already public.
Oh, yeah, it's already public.
Yeah, right. Too late for that, right?
Right.
It's in the, it's in the packet, separate packets, yeah.
Yep.
And they know that.
The only other question I had was in, let's see, where is it here? Item nine, indemnification. I, this is, I wasn't quite clear on what this was all about, because it looked like we were being held responsible for pretty much everything, and would also have to pay the legal fees to something or other. I don't know, I would defer to our legal counsel here on the --
It was interesting that when I, Andrea didn't have any issue with this. It's my only --
It's mutual magnification.
Yeah.
It's not --
And it's, the way, let me see, I wrote something about it. You know, my, my, my reading of it was simply as usual, it's pretty typical language, which is fairly confusing, though. Apparently, to just make sure it's clarity, there's clarity and understanding between everybody that we're trying to resolve this in the best way, yet there's that, if this happens at school, for instance, if a parent sends their child to school, this might seem a little simplistic or odd, and they're not happy with the situation, they're going to sue us. You know, that doesn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, but, but, for example, if a student, you know, fell down a flight of stairs and, you know, broke their legs, and they --
It's like any other student.
Well, I understand, but, I mean, that, it could be a situation where the family could sue us for something, you know, and you could imagine a suit on that basis, not getting the right to --
And once, and when they're in school, the responsibility for them in school is us. It's not Cambridge, it's not Cambridge.
The problem with that first sentence, though, is that, and that I understand, but the first sentence says that, but if that family goes and sues Cambridge or GP, and it happened on school property, that we will absorb the legal defense costs for GP and Cambridge.
Yeah, I just don't read it like that, so.
I don't think that's what indemnification means.
That's what it says, I'm pretty sure.
This is actually what appears in our construction contracts, in most of our contracts, the indemnification clause is just like this. It says, you're going to hold us harmless for things that are your responsibility, and we're going to hold you harmless for things that are our responsibility.
The difference here, though, is there's a third party that's not involved in this contract, and that's the families. So if a family, let's say the child falls on a flight of stairs and they sue the school, I get that, but they may also say, and this organization placed my child in your school, we're suing them too. And what this contract says is that if they're being sued in that situation, then the North Andover Public Schools is absorbing the legal costs for GP and Cambridge.
Well, but based on what the superintendent said, residential issues would not be our responsibility.
I'm not talking about residential, I'm talking about falling at school.
I think it means the family at home, like in China. Okay, all right, okay.
No, I get that, but --
If they fall down a flight of stairs here in our school building, because that family might say, "I'm suing both, you guys placed them and the school."
Right, what ends up happening is that if somebody sues and they name the school department and the home placement or this company, then it's going to be our attorneys who are representing or defending that case, so they would be covered as a defendant under us, and the same would hold if it happened at home, and we were named in the home situation, their attorney is responsible, and we'd be at that table that they'd be covering.
Yeah, it makes sense, thank you.
In all reality, I mean, if there is an issue, everyone's getting sued, so it doesn't really, I mean, and this just, this just doesn't, it doesn't require us to defend them at our cost, it requires us to defend ourselves at our cost.
And?
Where do you see the "and"?
In that first sentence. It says in the fourth line, including attorneys, reasonable attorneys' fees and costs, to which any Cambridge, GP-identified party may become subject to.
But the point is, you have to get to the very end of the sentence, which is almost halfway through the paragraph, which says, "at school."
Right.
Yeah.
Right, well, the point is, Mr. Mealy's point, we would have to do that anyway. For our contractors, we have to do that.
Yeah, it basically just says, we're not going to sue them for a suit that we are being named --
If they're on our job and they fall down and hurt themselves.
Well, can we limit the liability, then, to whatever the total cost of tuition is?
I would, interesting.
This is, but going back to what Hutch was saying, this is a student at our school, so whatever, we have liability insurance that covers our, all of our students, including these students, and that would fall under that. So you can't limit it to $12,000.
I'm saying in terms of our legal defense of GP and Cambridge.
To limit the legal fees to tuition.
Let me go back and see if I get this right. So what Mr. Mealy said was, all this says is that if a student has a problem at school, we're responsible and they're not. If the stu, if there's a problem with the student not at school, they're responsible and we're not.
Correct. Right, but we haven't seen the student, the contract between the family and these companies, so we don't know what that says and what rights they have and don't have.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. We're not a subject to that agreement, we're subject to the agreement with GP, and they signed this.
So if everybody signs, then this indemnification clause works in both ways, right?
In all ways.
Right.
Mrs. Tracy, how do you interpret that? You're conspicuously quiet.
I had questions last week, and I thought the superintendent's email and the memo from the school attorney answered my questions, so I'm content with the agreement. I think the reality is, I think Mr. Gross said, I mean, people are going to sue, they're going to sue, and contracts be damned.
Right, and it'll all figure it out in court, right?
As long as we don't, we're not required to use their counsel, then I'm okay with this, as long as we can defend ourselves, and this allows us to do that. So the only thing I might want to do, as part of amending our proposal, is to at least, before we do a second year, let's get a retrospective.
Oh, yeah.
And let's have the superintendent report out how things went, so that we can at least make a proactive decision rather than --
And set that based on the timeframes that are in here.
Agreed, agreed.
Great point.
Prior to the 90-day notice.
Yeah.
Can we just take the 90-day notice out? Why do we need to give them 90 days' notice, or they get to automatically renew?
Doesn't mean we have to accept students.
But why have it at all?
Because they have action activities that they need to do in order to line up the families and the students, and if they do that, and they have a student ready to come to North Andover, and we tell them three weeks before they're going to board a plane, well, we're very sorry.
But that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, let the contract year be the contract year. If we want to renew with them, we can renew with them, but who's going to remember at that point if -- at that point, if we're gonna cancel it or not, who's gonna bear that responsibility?
I would say that's like in your contracts that have...
Yeah. Must-renew clause, must-report clauses. We have one with...
I just don't know why we need it.
I, again, to Mr. Gross's point, I think they have made, they will have made and will continue to make an investment, and it's to help them make sure that that's worthwhile to continue by letting us, them know in enough time so they can decide whether they wanna continue the process.
Right, but, I mean, I would suggest just having them remember to ask us, and then we can agree to do it or not.
Oh, you make it their responsibility to ask us?
Yeah, I just don't know why it needs to be our responsibility. If they would like to work with us again, then next year, they can contact us and say, we'd love to renew, and then we can make that decision, or whoever's on the school can make that decision. But I don't know why we should automatically, that why we should be responsible for doing that.
Or whether default should be automatic renewal.
Right. All I'm saying is, there's no reason why we can't renew. I'm just saying, put it on them to say, we'd love to renew with you, and then that can be put on the agenda.
What's the possibility for having that...
I just simply think they need, I think we need some form of date in there, simply because they need to be able to do, as Mr. Lippert talked, they need to do their activities to get a new batch of students.
So, if we just took out the automatic renewal without being informed, right? Say, we're gonna inform you 90 days before that blah, 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 whether or not we wanna continue. But it doesn't necessarily, if it's, you know, 89 days, it doesn't, sorry, you're renewed, you know, too bad. Right? So, we still inform them 90 days, but if we miss by a day, it doesn't automatically kick us into renewal, automatic renewal.
Yeah, it's up to us to accept the students.
Frankly, I think that's immaterial. We can determine it at any time, so I don't think that provides...
We don't have to accept students, and if it's going poorly, I think there's gonna be a pretty good reminder that, hey, we gotta make sure we're out of this contract.
Right, but why lock ourselves in? So, let's say we have not a great experience, okay? But no one remembers to cancel the contract in the 90 days. Let's say they remember it in 75 days. And then that means that we can't, let's say we wanna keep doing a program like this, but just not with them. But now we're locked in with exclusivity with them for another year, so we'd have to take a year off. I just don't know why we're pitching a hole ourselves into this.
If it didn't work out with them, I don't know why, in any sense, why we'd go with anywhere else. It's like, that's not worth it.
But why are we taking that responsibility? I just don't underst, like, I don't know why we need it.
I would think it's a part of a process. I mean, it's gotta be on a checklist and a reminder that comes up at 100 days. If we're not happy, we're gonna get out of the contract. And I don't know what exactly the date is, whether it's a date we sign it or not, but whatever that date becomes, then somebody's got a calendar, hopefully multiple people, and 90 days prior to that date.
Or you put it in your Google Calendar, and you look at what you're telling them.
I'm sure that would just simply put it on.
Yeah.
Google Calendar.
Why should we take that, like, what benefit is it to us to take that responsibility?
I guess I just don't see it as a big deal. That's all.
But that's why we don't need it, 'cause it's on a, I mean, it's...
Well, but again, I think implied in Mr. Gross's early statement, it's a business, and so they want some assurance on their side, that it's worth continuing business with us. Right? So, they're trying to say, you know, let us know in enough time so we can continue to do this in a business.
All they need to do is contact us. It's their business.
Mr. Chairman, we are just giving the superintendent permission to sign this contract? We're not actually signing the contract as school members, are we?
We are giving the superintendent permission.
Could I just suggest, 'cause I can appreciate Ms. Warren's point, that maybe we close debate, and I'm prepared to vote for this, but if Mr., if Dr. Hutchinson can talk to them and can agree to take that term out, I'm comfortable with that. But at the same time, if they choose not to, then I'm still comfortable signing the agreement, so.
I would say, I can go to them, talk to them about that, and if they have an issue with it, I don't mind coming back here either.
But with or without it, I'm comfortable voting.
I have another question.
Mrs. Warren?
Couple of us.
Yep. In terms of academic support services, five...
Please reference a number, sir.
Five point three, yep.
Okay.
One of the questions that I had was, I know when Dr. Scazarella came in last week to talk about it, she said that they will provide English language and academic support tutoring when needed, so I think if we can just change the "may" to "will." And also, I had a question about this section two, because, let's say a student comes in, and they're here for a while, and we realize that they're having, they're struggling, they're having some issues, the teachers are noticing it. If that child requires additional services, evaluation, potentially modifications, accommodations, whatever it might be, who pays for that?
I'm sorry, what is the scenario that you're concerned about?
So, let's say a student comes in, they start the few months of school, and teachers start to recognize that the student is having trouble learning in school. And so, and evaluation's done, they go through the process, whatever it might be, and they determine that the student needs additional services, a paraprofessional, additional specialized services, whatever it might be, who would pay for that?
Well, you only do that by going through an IEP process.
Right.
And you gotta consider that these students, by the way, these are students that are highly recruited to come here, that gives them advantage getting into college. That's the type of students there, and very rarely do you ever come across even our own students, for instance, going on an IEP, after an IEP process when they're junior in high school.
And starting.
Yeah. It just doesn't happen. I shouldn't say it doesn't happen.
But if it did happen, who pays for it?
If it did happen, the likelihood would be that we would want to send the student home.
How could...
Pull their I-20.
You can do that.
Pull their I-20.
Pull their I-20, no matter what.
There's a big difference also between someone who needs a little support possibly versus, it's, we wouldn't place one of these students in an out-of-district placement or anything like that.
But how do we know?
Because they vet them, the kids.
One, they couldn't get in. I don't think the visa would allow them to go to an out-of-district placement, so.
Yeah. I think it's, I understand your concern, but I just think based on what we understand the program to be, the likelihood of that is so remote that, I don't know if it warrants opening contract negotiations with the three parties.
The one thing I, when I talked to one of the representatives today, who's a former superintendent in a district that had the program, by the way, he said, "The card you always hold is that you can pull the I-20 no matter what, for any reason."
But where does it say that?
It doesn't say that. That's just the regulations that we have with the visa. It doesn't say that in the contract. That's the way the visa works.
People withdraw the visa at any point.
We can pull the I-20 at any point, for whatever reason, and it's not appealable.
Does that fall under termination?
That's not in the contract, it's just the law. Say that again?
Does that fall under termination?
No, it's not in the contract, that's just the way.
So, if we choose to pull the I-20 for the student...
For that student.
For that student, we're released for that student's participation, or our responsibility for that student's participation.
They're out of the program, they have to, they can't stay here, they have to go home.
And there's no recourse?
No.
Not for the student.
And frankly, I mean, let's step back, this is a...
And he also said, "It just doesn't happen."
Right, I mean, these are families from a foreign country who wanna give their kids the best possible opportunity to get into a U.S. college, and this is an immersion program. It's a very good cultural enrichment program, both for the other students in the high school, and I think certainly for the student who comes overseas. And it, by the way, may make us a couple of dollars on the way to help subsidize other activities. So, I think, as Mr. Teresi stated, I'm fully prepared to vote in favor of this, see how it goes for the year, and I'm respectful of your concerns, I hear them, but the way the program has been presented and how other districts have had success with it, I think it's very low risk that we're gonna get into trouble with this. And, you know, based on the contract reading and our attorney's review, it sounds like this is a reasonable thing to move forward with.
I'm gonna go, can I go back just to what you talked about before, the academic support? 'Cause I've been thinking a little bit about that. I mean, I'm very comfortable with the wording the way it is, because it, I mean, I think what they need to do, when I look at this, is that they're not required to provide English language. I mean, if these students are having difficulty, you know, these students are participating in this program, and I think it's an odd way to say that they must provide English language and subject tutoring, if they choose to participate and the participation becomes mandatory. There's no cost to us, but it's that Cambridge provides it if they deem it as necessary.
But they may not.
But that's not our responsibility.
But listen, if the student is failing, and they go back to their country, the parents aren't gonna pay Cambridge. It's in their best interest to ensure that the students have a rich and successful experience here.
Right, and I agree with you, but the problem is that the contract says that if they don't pay Cambridge, Cambridge doesn't pay us.
We're not giving them the service.
That's not a service we're providing to them. So, I, that's a service that Cambridge is providing.
It's in addition to other fees and payable solely to Cambridge. It's not something we're doing.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is that if we take the child into our schools, we're required to provide them the services that they need. And all I'm saying is that I think where we already have, you know, a budget shortfall this year, this, I think this adds complication potentially.
This is slightly different, where we don't have to keep the student in the school. It's somewhat different.
It's optional.
This is an optional student. It's kind of a weird concept that, I hear what you're saying, and, so, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I move the previous question. I think we can move forward on the vote.
I've got one last question. Does our insurance policy allow for us to waive indemnification for companies that we work with?
You say waive indemnification, what do you mean?
Oh, I'm sorry, where we give indemnification to companies.
We do in all our contracts. That's, like I said, that is the standard indemnification clause. And all our contracts are reviewed by legal counsel.
And by insurance?
By insurance?
Yep.
We have separate liability insurance. Is that what you're referring to?
Mm-hmm.
They cover our liability, and they do a review each year.
So, would they review this contract, or would this not be something that would...
No, and that would be, that would be in mind of our legal counsel when reviewing our contracts.
That it meets the requirements for insurance.
Correct. Right.
All right, so I know that Mr. Teresi, I believe, had made a...
I don't think we really made a motion. I'd rather remember, half hour ago.
Okay.
I'm moving to approve the contract and instruct the superintendent to sign this as it's presented in our packet.
That was moved.
Was it moved?
Yeah, I think we just need the chair to call for a vote.
Yep.
I wasn't sure, I can't remember.
I thought we did. I'm honest, I thought we did.
Rewind the tape.
My question, I think to you, Mr. Teresi, was, were you doing it as presented here, or with the removal of the 90-day automatic renewal clause?
I don't still wanna hamstring the superintendent at this point. I think, I'm comfortable with him, talking to him, and he's gonna sign the contract, and if he calls in tomorrow, they'll take that out, then I'm fine with it. If they don't take it out, I'm still fine with it. So, I would say, as it is in the packet, and I think the superintendent's heard Ms. Warren's concern about it, and I think it's legitimate, and if he can do something about it, I'm sure he will.
Okay. All right, so I will call the motion. Sorry?
Yeah, just waiting for all...
All right, I'm gonna do a roll call. Ms. Limper?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Mrs. Warren?
No.
Yes, Teresi?
And I am a yes. So, we are four to one. All right.
I just mentioned, too, there's a lot of schools locally that do it, you know, in Massachusetts. With I-20 status, they take international students.
Okay.
All cool kids doing it?
Yeah. Okay.
Looks like Newton's on the list, so.
For good things, they'll keep it on there.
All right, jumping ahead, we have Old Business D, which is a second reading and approval of the domestic violence policy. I'm gonna respectfully ask that we table this, because Dr. Hutchinson is meeting with the union next...
Next Thursday.
Thursday. And so, I think that it's important for the union to have some opportunity to kind of read this and take a look at it in regards to how it is with the contract.
Now, this is a review as to the potential, well, this has to be inserted into the contract?
Um, yeah, that's, I mean, all other leave policies are in the contract now.
Yeah.
It doesn't restrict, I mean, there's one sentence in there that allows the superintendent to give leave anyway, so it's not gonna hurt our ability to comply with the law. But since there's some language in there that's similar to some language in the contract, I wanted to get a feel from the union, whether they feel like this should be embedded into the contract as well, and they're looking it over, and then, one way or the other, if they feel so, therefore, then we just simply open up an MOA.
Yep, and that was a question we had last week, on whether or not the union would need to do that. And so, I think before we take a vote on it, I think we wanna kind of understand their perspective of that. The other...
Do you need a motion to postpone, or can you just do that?
I think I can just table it, I don't think I need it. Yeah. The other thing that I just wanna, it's a little bit of clarification, is we're not under the gun for any timeline to implement this, so...
No, I mean, it's relatively new law, and we can comply with it, that's not an issue, without having voted on the policy.
And what about our non-union contracts?
Oh, that doesn't apply.
Okay.
The policy is sufficient, I would assume.
Okay.
The policy's sufficient for that, yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, so we're gonna move on to E, which is a second reading and approval of revision to policy DJE for the bidding requirements. The change that was there was the increase for construction and maintenance for, to secure multiple bids for projects over, it was $25,000, we are, that has been increased to $35,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To approve the policy as presented in the packet.
Seconded.
All right, we will open for discussion.
I think the outstanding question was, were there any other changes? I think the answer we got back was, no, it's just the amounts, so I'm good.
Correct, it was just the account, just the dollar amounts.
The dollar amounts.
And it complies with the state regulation, that's what changed.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor of approving the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Five to nothing. Any absentions? Or, no, sorry, absentions. All right, so five to nothing. I think I'm on the same stuff you're on. F, the second reading and the approval of the North Andover High School American Thought Overnight Trip to Washington, D.C.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve as presented in the packet, the North Andover High School American Thought Overnight Trip to Washington.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, for discussion, I know that, I think it was Ms. Ahari sent out some information from Dr. Scazarella regarding the security personnel that all of the hotels had, but specifically this one as well. I don't know if there's additional questions, or...
I think worthwhile activity, it's unfortunate, it's going to be three days of lost time at school, however, you know, the chaperone ratio's good, the security in the hotels overnight, I'm good with. I think it's a worthwhile activity.
All right, all in favor of approving the American Thought Overnight Trip to Washington, D.C.? Say aye.
Aye.
Any a no's? All right, five to nothing. G, the second reading and approval of the North Andover High School Student Council Overnight Trip to Hyannis, Mass.
I'm sorry, move to approve as presented in the packet, North Andover High School Council Trip to Hyannis.
Is there a second? Yeah, Mr. Teresi. Again, the biggest question I think we had was regarding the hotel security. Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
There was some question of how many students would participate.
It was eight.
All right, that was the other, that was the other one, okay, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, so A...
Yeah, the DECA one, it depends on who qualifies, I think.
Right, okay, very good, so. Good ratio, security's taken care of, it's fairly local. Again, it's unfortunate, it's three days, but again, a well worthwhile activity, and I think, if I recall, Dr. Sciarrela indicated we would get some feedback and some insights of what, what transpired and what, what was brought out, so that sounds good.
All right, all in favor of approving the Student Council Overnight Trip to Hyannis, Mass? Say aye.
Aye.
And oes? All right, five to nothing. H, second reading and approval of the North Andover High School DECA Overnight Trip to Boston.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve as presented, North Andover High School DECA Overnight Trip to Boston.
Second.
Second.
All right, open for discussion. Again, a little unsure on the number of students based upon qualifying criteria, and we got a response on the security.
So again, the only concern is the chaperone ratio, but I know that we have a policy for that, and I'm certain that we'll be able to recruit the right number of school and parent volunteers, but I just want to make sure that that is, that's visible before people board buses.
Okay. All right, any additional discussion? All in favor approving the overnight trip to Boston? Say aye.
Aye.
No noes, five to nothing. All right, moving along, presentation of the superintendent's recommended budget for fiscal year sixteen.
They're already...
We are there already. We didn't let Mr. Gilligan speak, that's probably...
I'm not sure if I heard it correctly.
No, you did.
I'm sure you didn't. All right, um, I just want to start, due to my current condition, I'm going to, uh, I'm already feeling a little exhausted anyway, so I'm going to ask Mr. Mealy to do the PowerPoint One of the things that we want to pay attention to here is that, one is that this is a reflection of a couple of things. One is, what we try to do is capture within the budget presentation what the budget summary is, and that's a document in front, in this book. The other piece is, what we want to be able to do is, there's a lot to absorb, especially in this book. The unusual part is, if you've been around, there's not as much to absorb because there's actually not too much that changes. Every year, we try to do new things, new initiatives, et cetera, but, you know, we still have roughly fifteen classrooms at every elementary school that, that need teachers in them, et cetera, so, um, but what we want to make sure is, based on tonight, is, next week, we're coming back, and the entire leadership team will be here next, next week, and so if there are any particular questions, materials you might want to see a different way, those are the possibilities for tonight, say, I'd like to, might want to, I, I might want to see it this way, so that we can prepare it and give it to you ahead of time for next week. Today is just to give you an overall view of where we anticipate going with the budget next year, based on many meetings that we've had over several months with our leadership team. There's always, um, when you, when you put it out to people, what do you want? You're going to get, it's like asking a kid for a, a holiday, what do you want? And they come back with a list of fifty things. So there's a lot of elements we know that could improve our schools. It's up to us to make some tough choices at different points in time to what we think, based on what we can afford, et cetera. So we look forward to the inquiry of the school committee, and then we look forward also to the whole leadership team being here next week to ask any particular questions you might have, which would also, hopefully, better inform the public hearing as well, so.
Thank you.
Jim?
Okay. So this may change, our first slide. I know there was some discussion about possibly changing the meeting, so if they change, we will obviously inform the public of that. Tonight is the initial presentation of the superintendent's recommended budget. We will have deliberations, and then we will have a public hearing, and on February 5th, the school committee will approve the FY16 budget, and that is to comply with the town's timeline for the town manager getting his budget together to FinCom and then on to town meeting.
And that's in the charter, the town charter?
Yes, and they back, they, do they count back from that, from town meeting? Just, I put this slide in as a reminder of where we come up with, what percentage increase we anticipate in our budget, and we get it from the town manager, but we do participate. Myself and, and Hutch are members of the Revenue and Fixed Costs Committee, along with Lynn Savage, the Town Finance Director, and two FinCom members. And what we do is, we, we look at the projections for revenues for the coming year, and we look at the projections for fixed costs, and when you subtract the fixed costs from the anticipated revenues, that's the available funding. And that determines how much should be available in the coming year for a budget increase. And the split remains at, at the moment to be sixty-eight percent of the available funding going to the school department and thirty-two percent to the municipal departments, and it's been that way for a few years now. And that comes out to three and a half percent budget increase for FY16. And so what does that equate to in dollars? We have, um, we have added, if you recall, our budget was forty-one, close to forty-one and a half million dollars that we approved last year, but six hundred and eighty thousand was added to that for full-day kindergarten, and that's why we had, we now have a, a budget of forty-two million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and that's what we're adding three and a half percent to, and that comes out to one point four seven four million dollars. And what's our focus? Our focus, as it has been for a few years now, is to retain a necessary teaching position so that we do not negatively impact class size. We maintain that class size per the, the guidelines as best we can and as space allows. We identify technology that will support teaching and learning, and if we are able to identify it, we acquire it. Improve progress of high-needs learners, we've talked about that. Provide effective and efficient special education services and initiatives, and basically what that means is, if we can offer the program in district, let's do it, if it makes sense. And trying to transition to performance-based budgeting, which should help us impact the goal of becoming a Level One district, allows to continue to focus on curriculum development, professional development, and data-driven decision-making, to be able to review and evaluate the current initiatives we have going, to identify, review, and evaluate new initiatives, and to identify the outcome measurements for those initiatives. So using the, um, three and a half percent, what does that equate to for projected funds over level services? Every year, level services averages about three percent of our budget. We would need that in order to, um, to meet contract step-in salary increases or, or cost of living increases. So when we take that into account, and we also will use some percentage for utility cost increases depending on the market and other contracted services, and like I said, it comes out to about three percent, which leaves us in this case about a half a percent of what you might want to call discretionary funds. So cost of level services this year came to three point oh one percent, which is right on average. So that means we would need a budget of forty-three million, four oh one, which would leave two hundred and ten thousand dollars. But in addition to that, we will no longer have a lease cost for our office space. We move into the new admin building, and we save ninety-two thousand in annual lease payments. And also, with the ESCO project and the guarantee of savings for utilities, we're able to reduce our utility costs by two hundred and eighty thousand, which are staying in our budget. So that two hundred and eighty thousand, ninety-two thousand gets added to the other funds of two hundred and ten thousand, so that gives us five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. But right now, looking at out-of-district cost in the students that we currently have, they are two hundred and seventy thousand more than what was in the budget, so we have to use that money, and that leaves us with three hundred and twelve thousand that we can use for identified new needs or initiatives. Yep?
Mr. Chair, are we going to be taking questions as we go along?
Sure, as we go is, is good.
So obviously, the, um, the lease savings is one-time. Would, do you totally savings, would you consider that one-time revenue? Would you consider we're going to, are we going to bake two eighty into the, to the budget going forward?
It's always a question of what do you do with those funds? They're in there now, as you say, baked in. They are annual amounts that we've been paying, and so we're reducing by that amount, so that would be an annual savings going forward of those amounts. Depending on what we do with them, if we use them for one-time cost, then that would be additional funds you'd have going forward. If we use them for staff or for...
I understand, but you're, you're saying that these two, ninety-two thousand for lease savings and two hundred and eighty thousand for utility savings, you're going to consider those recurring revenues going forward?
Because we get...
I'm just wanting to...
Yes, yes, to answer your question, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have, I know we did a number of ESCO projects last summer, and that's the result of the two hundred, I'm sure the results are the projection of, at minimum of two hundred and eighty.
Correct.
Are, do we have other large projects that will occur at the end of the next year? I know that there was a multi-year.
No, they're complete. Well, they're almost complete now, but they will be complete, and there are no others to follow.
Okay, so some of the other things were town that were not?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, they, they were both school and municipal.
Okay.
But the, the guarantee, it's two hundred and eighty thousand each year...
Right.
Going forward is the savings.
Okay.
So regarding level services, what do we account for? Current staffing levels, current service levels, contract inflation adjustments, enrollment projections, one-time expenses, and by one-time expenses, a good example of that is, some contracts have retirement clauses, that if somebody announces their retirement, they're going to get four thousand dollars next year as a payout. Those types of expenses have to be accounted for. This, this past year, the current year wherein, we had an additional four thousand dollars in the budget for superintendent search, those kind of things. I'll get into more, I've bolded it, but there is a, a huge item, I think we've mentioned, is the Special Education Stabilization Fund that's going to be proposed, and then, as I said, the average annual cost of level services has been three percent.
On the Special Ed Stabilization Fund, does that mean that we don't have our own reserve built into this budget?
Right, exactly, and my, you know, my next slide...
Yep.
Talks about the fact that the town manager has already proposed to, or at least given the heads-up to the Board of Selectmen, that he will be proposing a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar stabilization fund for out-of-district tuition. And this is huge for us. Normally, we have to try to build a contingency, knowing that there are going to be unanticipated expenses, and we've been trying to get that to about a half million dollars, and frankly, we came into this year with about a half million dollars, and it wasn't sufficient. Seven hundred and fifty thousand is a much better number, but this provides us the contingency for unanticipated expenses that we've been trying to build. It's, it's based on historical need, it certainly creates more stability within the operating budget, and allows the additional funds in our budget, such as the lease payment and the ESCO savings, to be used for other things, rather than set aside for contingency.
What's in our current budget for the contingency?
We started with, we had budgeted in excess of a hundred and seventy-five thousand in out-of-district tuition, plus we had the two amounts from the town manager the previous year, years, one hundred and fifty and one seventy-five.
Can you, Mr. Mealy, can you walk through the mechanics of that? How, is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars going to be taken from our budget this year?
No, no, here's my understanding, that they're going to, he's proposing that they create a, that, from free cash for the town, seven hundred and fifty thousand be put into a stabilization fund that would require a town meeting vote to utilize. And that works fine for us because we can, with the size of our budget, if we're over, as we're going through the year, we can still be okay in May. It would be only at the end of the year that you'd have to worry about it. So it would require a vote at town meeting that, we've had this much in unanticipated tuitions, let's say four hundred thousand dollars. So town meeting vote would take place to allow the four hundred thousand to be moved into the school district budget to cover those costs, and then a second vote would be to replenish the stabilization fund to that level, or a different level it could be, but that's the mechanism that they're proposing.
And I, my understanding, Mr. Mealy, is that because it's a stabilization fund, it requires a much larger percentage of the voting, of the voters.
I could get, I could guess it to two-thirds, I don't know for sure.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's a larger number, I know that. I, I don't, do you remember, Mr. Teresi, about, for stability, is seventy, I don't know, two-thirds or seventy-five percent?
Is that...
It's a big number.
That's the proposal, is that still open for negotiation?
Which part?
Just having town meeting approval to, to do it?
Um, that's the way it works. I mean, there could be discussions for another mechanism, although I will say that it certainly works for us, and when present, I was there when he presented it to the Board of Selectmen, and they were all very much in favor of doing this. I don't know if I'd want to...
No, I don't want to rock the boat. However, we, we had extraordinary, I'm sorry, Mr. Teresi, we, we had extraordinary expenses this year that I, from what I understand, we'll be getting more reimbursement than we would normally have gotten, um, going into next year.
Didn't we hit...
Yeah, well, and that would be fine, because you're talking about circuit breaker reimbursement.
Right, so my question is, how does that, how have you modeled that incremental reimbursement in the two-seventy that we think we're going to need in next budget to accommodate the, the over, the over special ed spending?
Can you say that one more time?
Sure, so you, you're proposing two hundred and seventy thousand to offset the out-of-district placements that we had this year.
What we currently know them to be.
Right.
That's our, our existing students.
Right, so we're going to be reimbursed at a higher rate for some of that expense. Is that baked into the model for the two-seventy that you're pulling out of the budget, or putting into the budget for next year?
The reimbursement would be in seventeen.
No, that'll be, that'll be the next budget year...
Right.
Because it's extraordinary expenses.
Oh, extraordinary.
Yeah, um, it's a good question, because what happens is, come, oh, I'd say, April, May, we have to, um, maybe even June, early June, we have to report to the state...
Right.
Our number, and then they let us know what our reimbursement is going to be the following year. At that time, it may come back, what, what you're saying is, you know, if we get one point four million this year in reimbursement, because we've had such high expenses this year, it might be one point six million that we're getting in reimbursement, and extra two hundred thousand more than we got this year.
But I thought that was a one-year reimbursement.
It is, and my, that's my point, I mean, I'm just curious how this is going to fit into the argument or the discussion that we're going to have at town meeting about moving, you know, free cash.
Well, that would, that would be used first.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to see.
We would know that number, and we would be able to use that before we had, ideally, we wouldn't tap it.
We'd never use the seven-fifth.
We wouldn't use it.
Right, that would be the ideal situation.
Right, so, so any additional funds we receive in circuit break, my, and again, you know, the percentage we get in that changes each year. Fortunately, the last few years, it's been seventy-two percent...
Right.
And steady, but we remember just a few years ago, it was forty percent.
Forty percent, that hurt.
Right, so if it suddenly dropped, this protects us, you know, having that stabilization fund. But if it is more, we tap into that before we go into the stabilization fund.
Good.
To you, let me just give you my understanding, Mr. Teresi, about why stabilization and not something else like a revolving fund. There was always some hesitancy on the part of the Board of Selectmen to give the school committee and the school department more money, right? This sort of protects them, right, protects them because it requires, uh, a lot of people to agree that we ought to be able to use the money, that what stabilization is about, and, you know, the way we have our regular sort of rainy day stabilization fund, you know, you got to, I think it's three-quarters, I think it's a big number to vote the money out, so it's a pretty high threshold we have to meet to get the money out. Now, we hope that the town will see it such that, you know, when we have the, you know, this is like our version of snow and ice, right? We can't anticipate what the right, what's going to happen, so we just hope the town will go along with the stabilization idea, but this was, I think, as much to satisfy some concerns on the part of the Board of Selectmen about, oh, if we, if it was a revolving fund, oh, well, let us use it for other stuff, it won't be for the right thing, and blah, blah, blah. That's, I believe, the insight as to why it's a stabilization fund.
The question related to that is, what is our contingency if that initiative does not succeed, and we haven't funded the stabilization fund in our operating budget? Other than, we're not going to buy any erasers or pencils.
Yeah, it's a good question, yeah, exactly.
Because, I mean, we were faced with that a few years ago when we had a reduced head count, and that was, again, we, we had to make very difficult decisions on what program we're not going to do to pay for special ed.
Right, right.
So I'm, that might be a discussion that we have with the special ed director and So that might be a discussion that we have with the special ed director and find out, you know, are there any alternatives other than put all the eggs in the basket that the town manager and finance committee will be successful in helping us with the $750,000 contingency fund?
Yeah, it's certainly a compelling enough case for the need, because otherwise, we would have to be looking to cut our budget by 500 to 750,000 dollars.
If we had the expense and if the fund wasn't available.
Correct.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Correct.
If this was in-
But we covered the known expense.
And it's January?
Well, no, but I'm saying, based on what we know.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've covered what we know we got. Agreed.
Right, I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
This next year's budget.
Yeah, but the bucket's empty.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So there's nothing-
We put nothing in the bucket.
In this budget for next year, there's nothing to put in the bucket. Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Correct.
Nothing set aside for this, because we're assuming-
Other than our current expenses.
What makes me very nervous is having to go and get a three-quarters vote at town meeting. I mean, that's, a 50%, I mean, I think is realistic. I mean, two-thirds, three-quarters is-
It's at least two-thirds. I think it's three-quarters.
Yeah. This isn't cupcakes or chicken.
No, 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 but I believe that is, actually, that is state law. I mean, that's not, it's not charter viola, it's a state law, that that's the way these kinds of funds work, and the way you can, what you have to do to set them up and use them.
I understand that, and my point, I think, is the risk that we have in not getting it.
Well, let me just give you the other side of that. This year, we got extra funds twice from the town manager. There's a risk in that. You know, next year, he says, sorry, I don't have $300,000 to give you this time. You know, so, you know, there's risks, no matter how we look at it. You know, we didn't have enough money in this current budget to cover, cover our expenses. We used a bunch of extra town money.
We've been searching for quite a while now for a solution to this problem, or this difficulty, and this is the best one that's come up.
Mr. Millie, to your knowledge, is there a warrant article already drafted?
They haven't drafted anywhere an article yet.
I think based, oh, no, go ahead.
You know, based on the reaction to the town manager's initial proposal, we were very much encouraged. And every year, since we've been begun to set aside those contingency funds, we've done so in discussions with the town manager. So if the worst-case scenario came, came out, I would say after, immediately after town meeting, we'd have about a month of really serious shuffling to do, based on that possibility. And we'd face it. So-
Well, okay, but is it kind of, it's a scenario like we've seen only once so far, which is, we have town meeting, this doesn't pass, right? So we have no money. And then two out-of-district claimants show up between then and the end of the year, or sometime, right away.
Okay, what it means, though, is that you have no contingency that you've budgeted for, okay?
I get that.
Now, if it doesn't pass at town meeting, I'm not sure what the ability of the town manager would be to have another type of contingency that he's provided for us the last couple of years.
You know, those could be actually discussions that you all, in your weekly meetings, might wanna have with the town manager. I, you know, I think the way I heard him describe this was part of his view of trying to provide sustainable government, you know, sustainable services to the town of North Andover, and that fits into that, under that sort of banner.
No question. This is the ideal situation for the town and the schools to be in, where it's available. And it, you know, if someone comes in district, we don't have to stop doing things and lay off people to pay for the needs of the student. The concern I have is, what happens if that doesn't happen? And how do we get from here to there?
But, okay, we don't often do this at this point in the process, but we have done it many times in the past, which is, this is, we impress upon the people who are best, who are directly impacted, i.e. parents, who are voters.
Yep, yep.
This is a good thing. Please help us by going to town meeting and voting for them. Thank you very much. I mean, it's a political process at this point.
I agree, but should we do some contingency planning within our existing proposal to accommodate at least something?
I would say at this point in time, if we move forward with the budget presentation, you'll see what other monies may or may not be available. I think this is a really important point that we won't forget, and we can come up with a conversation with the town manager subsequently as well.
Okay, fair.
So, here's a list, as Hutch was talking about, when we asked the leadership team if we had additional funds, what we'd do. And then we try to prioritize those as we do each year. Those in green would be able to be covered, and the reason it comes out exactly at 312, 688, which is what's available, is because originally, the K-5 computer replacement, that student computers at the elementary level, that request was 100,000, but it was reduced from 100 to 72, 688, so that it would then fit in. So you can see the items are a sixth-grade teacher at the middle school, which would even off to sixth grade to be the same as seventh and eighth grade, and allow them to, what's that?
As well as fifth grade.
Right.
Is there a problem now with fifth?
No, fifth grade's pretty much always been 15 classrooms, and sixth grade has always then been one less. And as a result, the class is bubble right up in middle school.
We don't have the grade populations in the budget packet?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Just have middle school.
We can bring those.
Yep. The second item includes a point-three guidance counselor for the high school to meet the increasing enrollment numbers there. It includes textbooks for science and social studies, and some time for the, is it the after-school classroom that they have? Monitor for that, for extra work for students, totaling $54,000. The third item is to add to the growing top program. It's been extremely successful. We currently have eight students there. It only costs us half the price of the teacher and the two paras that are in there, and the initial cost of the van, which has already been paid for. But it continues to expand and requires an additional teacher and another van in order to manage the number of students that will be there. And we, we call it cost avoidance, but it would cost us over a million dollars to send those students out of district if we didn't have the program with Andover.
This is the 18 and 22.
Correct.
18 and 22.
That we have it in Andover.
And we only do it with Andover. Is there any possibility of expansion of that program for additional savings? Or is that really, like, if we brought in another community?
I'm not sure. You know, if there was capacity, I'd say that made sense. But we were kind of over with the current staffing in the van that we have, and adding these will get us to what we need. So I would say that would make sense if, for some reason, and it does kind of go cyclical. If it drops, then it might make sense to offer it to neighboring communities when that's the case.
Okay.
And communities are always looking for that type of placement.
Yeah.
And I would imagine it probably ebbs and flows a little bit with Andover, so we may go higher a couple of years, and they may-
That's the anticipation, yeah. We see another uptick next year, and then after that, it looks like we might be going down, and they might be going up.
Okay.
Yep.
So you show this as a teacher, although there's no FTE count. Is this a teacher in Andover?
Oh, and I do that because they are hired by Andover, and our cost is the half the salary, but there are no, you know, benefit obligations.
So help me understand how the 63K?
That's half of a teacher's salary plus half of the cost of a van.
That's a big van.
Well, it's a 15-passenger van. But you figure 30, 35,000 for the teacher. Yep.
That's our figure.
Right.
And half of that will be a-
Recurring.
Correct. One, half of that will be that one-time expense.
The van.
Correct. Yep. And then the elementary self-contained social-emotional program, and with two FTEs, we're saying a teacher and a para. That's why it's 69,000.
Where would that be?
That, you know, that actually, yeah, and actually, Gilli will get a good sense of the possibility tomorrow. He's gonna be spending some time with the DESC representative touring our schools, because they had expressed some concerns about our space usage, so we'll see.
Like cinema.
Yeah.
Looking at space.
And then previously mentioned computer replacement for elementary students. And then the other items include technology and literacy. Yep.
Just another question. So the computer replacement as well? Is that just a one-time hit?
Yeah, well, what we're trying to do, yeah, and we've got it in different places. Now, this would get added to the technology line we have. We're trying to get to a point in our operating budget where we have a three-to-four-year cycle of annual replacement costs, and we have a sufficient amount in there that we can replace them on that schedule. So we're almost there.
Is this for the purchase or the lease?
My preference is purchase. We had to lease last year-
Right.
In order to get, you know, all of the computers we needed. But the attempt is going to be that that be our last lease, and that we have enough in the budget to purchase the annual amount we need going forward.
In the CIP, there's kind of, out in the future, there's a recurring line item of like $100,000 or something. Is that like this, or is that a totally different thing?
That's for-
Infrastructure.
Maintenance of our infrastructure and internet.
Okay.
Yep, and then if you recall, that goes from, our total asset's about a million dollars. So $100,000 a year would be a 10-year replacement cycle, and that's not sufficient. So in a few years, it gets bumped up to 200,000, which would put us on a five-year, which is much more reasonable.
Mr. Millie?
I'm sorry, please.
Just a quick question on this slide. If there is, if more money is found, so to speak, do you just move right down the list on this? And then the next one up is the 101 pilot, eighth and grade?
It's the way we try to set it up.
Okay, so that list is kind of like listed-
By priority, by, yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Question on the computer replacement. Is the intention to, what is, what is the goal of that? Is it to provide some computer resources at the elementary level, or is there a specific program or pilot?
These are students, student computers.
Right, so is there a program that we're trying to provide equipment for that we have in hand? Or is this to apply some computer resources to support the elementary schools?
To supply, exactly. Supply some computer that, at the elementary level that we haven't had.
Okay, so, you know, if that's a Chromebook, that's about 250 computers.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess my question is, do we have a plan, a technology plan to take advantage of those computers to facilitate teaching and learning at the elementary schools?
Yeah, and we'll have Mike Grant here, and we'll give them the heads up.
Okay, yeah. Because I'd like to start connecting these, rather than say, you know, let's, we've got bandwidth, now we're getting computers, let's do something with it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Couple of quick questions. The, kind of about halfway down, we've got additional reading tutors to help with intervention, and then an inclusion teacher at the high school, which is about 104,000. Are we saving Peter to pay Paul here with some potential out-of-district? I mean, if we were to bring those in, are we saving, is there an opportunity to save any?
Was that a caseload issue?
Yeah, well, the inclusion teacher at the high school is definitely a caseload issue. It's getting, it's the high school, you know.
Yep.
The caseload is getting extremely high for each teacher, so this is, that's addressing that. It would make it a more reasonable amount for each teacher.
But it, it's not like we're gonna then have to outplace six students-
Correct.
For $600,000.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, with the instructional technology specialist that's there, I mean, would that be district-wide? Is that focused on a specific K to five?
Mike can address that, but at this time, that would be district-wide. I mean, you know, an instructional technology specialist is something a lot of districts have, or not just one, but, you know, positions that they have, we don't have it. It would be nice if we could start to build towards that. So if you started with one, it would be district-wide, and then if you were able to add any more in the future, then you can start to assign them different levels.
Even the district-wide, you're looking at, right, therefore, what would we want to accomplish with that one person next year? And then you have to make those decisions.
Is it sort of like the model we've used for elementary, the elementary school librarian?
Librarian.
Yep.
Yeah.
And somewhere along, we start out with.
Same idea. Yep.
But it ties into what Brian was saying. If we get the technology, then how do we best use it to impact teaching and learning?
Yeah, when Mr. Grant comes, it would be very helpful for him to be able to talk to what's above as well as what's below. For example, if it's a BYOD program, how come it costs 20 grand? Why can't we do a BYOD pilot with bring your own device?
Those are BYOB.
No, D, BYOD. Just to be clear, that's BYOD.
We'll clear the list.
I think Mike would answer that, but I also think we'd have to, you know, you have to also consider kids who may not have a device.
And maybe additional software required to manage the resource when it comes in.
So that's, that's what I like to-
Start-up cost.
Because I know when we went to, you know, program-based budgeting, it was, it was like a breath of fresh air, that it all made sense. What, and again, in terms of providing feedback, it would be helpful to find out, did we meet the measures that we set for ourselves in the performance, or in the program-based budgeting? And then is this a, are these requests, are they fragments of where we still need to make improvements or fine-tuning? Because I was very surprised to see the, the reading assistance so far down the list. To, you know, the additional reading tutors. And I know there was some discussion about the fellows that we did use this year from Merrimack. And so I'd like, I'd like to digest that, and I think that's one in particular-
Well, that's another section, and if you'll read the summary.
Yeah.
You're gonna see in the summary that we're using that money differently. It's not included in here, because it's money that already exists.
Right, it's also a reduction in the number of resources. So I'd be hopeful to have a dialogue about how the reading program is, you know, moving forward and how this is beneficial.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, so what you have in front of you with regards to the budget book, it begins with the executive summary that Hutch has put together. You have the budget calendar. You have historical budget data going back to FY11, so you can see by program how it's progressed over the years. And then it has the FY16 recommended budget in four different formats, but we can do any format you want. Right now, it's by program, by account description, and in detail, meaning line items, by program and by location. So the account number is each one. But we can do it if you want to do it by object code, if you want to do it by DOE code. We can do any of that and send it to you. And then the last section has data. It's got the comparable data, the enrollment data, and performance data.
Can we, just a note, could you put all the enrollment data in there?
Yeah, we can have that next time.
Just in the, so it's given in there.
Yep, yep.
Because it's hard, you know, trying to compare, you know, you're talking about 15 classrooms, 14, 8, I don't know what the enrollment looks like, so it's hard to evaluate that.
Okay. And this is just one look. This is the budget summary by program. And so you can see going back to FY11 to the recommended FY16 and the programs that we have, you'll see one that's missing. Anybody know which program from last year is missing? Kindergarten.
Yeah.
Because we highlighted it last year because we were moving to free full-day kindergarten, but it is now included as part of elementary and has been moved in for all of those different budget years. So the total is showed up, is showing up in there.
So elementary really means PK to five.
Correct. Yep, and then preschool is still its own.
And you're totaling here, you're including the curriculum development FTEs in central office district-wide and not in curriculum professional development?
I'm including what?
The curriculum coordinators.
The curriculum coordinator's salaries are in the curriculum, well-
It's in district-wide, right? It can't be, because it's-
It could. Well, if you look at your book-
Okay.
You'll see the different line items and which one is in.
Go back. You said one thing, and I see another thing. Where is, where is pre-K in elementary?
Yes.
I do not see another line item for pre-K.
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 Mm-hmm.
So it must be in elementary, right?
It's in special education.
It's in special education.
Really?
Yep.
What is?
That's what it is.
Right. It's all, if you look at the code for any ECC line item, it has 280 in there, so.
Okay, you're right.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Millie, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The FY15 in the district, central office district-wide, would that, is that where the central office 92,000 would be for FY15?
Yes.
So that number, the $92,000 we're saving-
Well, I say yes. Now I think of it, I'd have to check, because it could be in maintenance operations as well.
That goes down by-
I was just curious to know, yeah, I want to know why it jumped that much, the, the- central office from FY15 to FY16, factoring in the fact that ninety-two thousand dollars I would assume was in the line item, but maybe it's in a different line item.
Yep. And if you look at the budget book and you look at by, detailed by program, then you'll see the different line items and you'll be able to see exactly, it includes the account description. So, you'll be able to see what went up and what went down.
That's actually section D, page one.
When you look at this, if you look at the maintenance line item, it went down a lot.
Yeah, that's, that could be, that could be it. The utilities plus.
That's almost fourteen percent, so.
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's an important distinction. The central office district-wide is not necessarily administrative support. We have curriculum coordination in there. We have other shared services across the district that people may not be used to seeing rolled up into that, into that line item. So, what looks like a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bump in central office spending is really on teaching and learning and not GNA. So, I think that's, that's an important, important thing to mind.
Back to the other point, to that point, I would say both savings are built into the maintenance and operation.
Yeah. After I had said it, I think that the lease comes out of maintenance and operations.
So, this is a, almost an over, over four-hundred-thousand-dollar savings in that line.
Right.
So, if you added 280 and 90.
You're at 370.
Yeah. So, yeah, that would make sense.
So, budget notes, for all salary increases, we use 2.25% for the step, not the steps, for the increase in the salary schedule and for non-union employees. As I said, we also have to account for step and column increases, but 2.25% is consistent with all of the union groups and also with the municipal side. They are doing it a little differently. They are going to do a 2% increase as of July 1 and then a 2.5% increase as of January 1. So, the total comes to 2.25%. It's just their base will go up a little bit more than our base would for salary. Stabilization fund we talked about would allow 280,000 that we saved in ESCO initiatives be used for new initiatives rather than special education contingency. New admin building opening in July allows for that lease payment to be reallocated. And then enrollment projections continue to indicate trend is level growth. And you'll see that when we add that information into that section.
Can I ask what you, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Can I ask what you modeled for turnover savings?
For what savings?
Turnover savings. Is it consistent?
Yeah. You know what? I had to use a lower number and, and in all honesty, I tend to use turnover savings as a contingency. I don't budget turnover savings. But right now, we have three teachers who have indicated they are retiring.
I guess my, my question is, were the assumptions we went into the, last year's contract negotiations consistent?
They were for this year.
Okay.
This, this coming year looks like it's gonna be lower than, than normal.
Okay.
But we're, we.
It's early.
It's early. And we have accounted for all of the increases, step and salary. So, anything that we get in turnover savings will be contingency funds.
Okay. So, wondering is, is no new program opportunities?
And we don't need it to be a certain number.
Okay.
Right.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
In terms of just, I know that there's a ninety-two thousand with the lease payments for that, but that includes any costs associated with moving into the building. I mean, that's not, or is that?
I was gonna ask about the.
Yeah. The last time we moved, and it was right after I had started, when we went from High Street to 1600 Osgood. It cost about four thousand dollars. And that was using.
There's money right there. Boom.
Yep. And that was using a moving company that I'm not sure we need to. I mean, we've got, we've got the luxury of probably two and a half months to move from one place to the other.
Oh, we got a great panel there.
Yeah. So, I wouldn't, if, we might do some things, but it's gonna be a very low-cost item. It won't be much at all. And that would go into that category of one-time expenses.
Okay.
So, to summarize what we've been looking at, we always are looking at the teaching positions and class size. We have to look at the bubble classes and then especially at the elementary level, where do we think we might be able to drop a class and where do we think we have to add a class? And in the end, they usually even out from one year to the next. And, and obviously, trying to maintain class sizes best we can. We look at the pressure points of those grades and then what effect that will have on trying to get to level-one status.
Just so you know, the, I mean, the next few sections here, there's a lot more text to it in the, in the budget summary.
Right. What I did is I took from Hutch's executive summary, the bullet points to create these slides. So, budgeting for performance initiatives, the curriculum and instructional leadership initiative continues. The literacy model will be, will be discussed further. That is changing from this year to next year. We need to, as a leadership team, see how we can continue to focus on the high-needs groups and again, trying to identify where technology might help for teaching and learning. And then the special education programs, always looking to see if we can bring things in district.
I particularly like the way you addressed the high-needs group and family and community engagement. I thought that was a, a good, a good linkage. So, I'd like, like to hear how we're gonna do that.
Yep. And regarding curriculum and instructional leadership, the coordinators in Gillie and Hutch can attest to this, are working out very well. And as are the facilitators of collaborative inquiry, FCIs.
Are those stipulated positions?
FCIs?
Yes.
They're stipulated.
So, all nineteen of whatever we've got, a big number, they're all stipulated positions?
Yes. And so, they tie into the district strategic plan and try to align focus areas with the goals and measurements. And then the literacy model, do one of you guys wanna talk about this one?
Sure.
The literacy model that we've been trying to work in line with, and you've seen the model, the, the three-tier pyramid of intervention, you've seen it in the GEAR model as well, by the way. This year, we were with the literacy coaches, we were trying to impact tier one. Tier one basically says eighty to ninety, ninety percent of your students in elementary school will become proficient readers by the end of grade three, basically if you have, based on classroom instruction. What we're trying to work with, we'll get more in detail if you need it next year, next week, as well as, as, as well as future reports, is that's how we're trying to focus. A lot of our PD with our literacy, literacy coaches and our reading teachers, leading that part. So, that we, we think we've made a lot of advancement this year in regard to that model and we want to be able to solidify that more next year. So, that some of the money that we already have existing, you'll see that in the, in the text part of my summary. Tier two, we have felt that, based on what, how we, the decision we made this year to use to be more on the Merrimack fellows wasn't working out as well as we thought it might. And so, that we're gonna shift some of that personnel support more on, going back to more reading tutors, which will be a combination of tier two. Tier two could be pulled out or could be in classroom. The in-classroom piece typically engages not just a classroom teacher, but somebody else. And that doesn't necessarily cost more money. It costs simply more design and structure. So, for instance, designing intervention blocks within the schedule of an elementary school and how you get at the same, as, when you get, you can't have intervention blocks all at the same time because then you can't get all the people there. So, it's simply coordinating the elementary schedule, the principle, and that means coordinating also, you, pretty much you call it all hands-on-deck approach during different times for different, different grade levels. So, that would also engage then, in many instances, special education teachers as well as paraprofessionals, as well as tutors, for instance. So, putting more emphasis towards that. Could we always use more? Absolutely. But this is all we have. So, it's speaking to, and you'll always hear the primitive interventions, the RTI model. What we really mean is how can we make that really operable? And again, you get the biggest bang for your buck if you really pay attention to the classroom. And that's what we were focusing on this year. And so far, the two coaches that we have are making a definite difference. They're getting into a lot of classrooms. People are inviting them in a lot more. So, you'll hear more about that, but that's, how can we build off of that, little by little? And what we have that's met the green line section is let's, what, what can we do with reorganizing what we currently have? If we had more below that green line, we'd have another literacy coach, we'd have some more tutors.
Now, are we paying for the Merrimack people?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, that's money that we would then.
Yes, that's how we use it. We use that money differently. That's why it's cost neutral, so we didn't put it into any line item there.
And that's why those lines were in addition to those changes.
Right, right, right. No, I understand.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. I thought, I, somehow I thought there were students for which we weren't paying, but if we are paying for them, then I understand how that works. Exactly. Yeah, that's good. Okay.
And then regarding technology, we've already restructured district technology leadership and that continues to have a positive effect. The infrastructure and software needs assessment continues. Computer replacement plan, we talked about that, that we continue to try to, and we're getting closer to having that annual amount in our budget. And the technology for teaching and learning and possibly a pilot moving towards the one-to-one initiative, piloted in the eighth and ninth grade and, and then possibly roll out to the high school, but there's a lot of evaluation and assessment that has to take place before we get there. And then regarding special education, inclusion, staffing and caseloads, we talked about that. Out-of-district placements, the stabilization fund would go a huge way in, in addressing that. ECC and early elementary program needs continue. And then the stabilization fund would be critical, not only for addressing those out-of-district placement needs, but in also minimizing the impact on our operating budget.
A question, are there any proposals we're gonna be seeing from special ed on creative programs, either fill holes or, you know, cost avoidance, like we've?
Those two, that Jim mentioned two already.
Right. Top program.
The self-contained.
Elementary level.
And are we, are we able to get any quantifiable data on the programs that we did invoke last year? Did we get cost savings?
We can, yeah. And that's, of all the information we need to acquire, that's usually the easiest one to get.
Right.
So, yes, we can get that.
Wasn't that the middle school autism program? Or was it?
No, it was in the high, I thought, wasn't it?
Was it the high school?
There was a hole in the transition from.
There were a number of them, yeah. Well, it was about getting the consistency of programs from one level to the other. We did a couple and one, one of them was in the middle school.
Okay. Right. Yep. So, the budget highlights, we've talked about the middle school teacher, the top program, the special education programs, high school guidance and educational materials, technology, that's the elementary student computers, and then the stabilization fund.
Just one question though, Mr. Mueller. When we talk about technology, I mean, this is just, and this is a stopgap at best. I mean, if we were gonna do something significant, we'd be talking about hundreds of thousands. I mean, if we're gonna do one-to-one at the high and middle schools.
It would be, right. It's a matter of answering those questions of what makes the most sense to do and then figuring out.
I get that. I get that. But I, I just, you know, I, although it, it looks good, it's still sort of finger-in-the-dike kind of stuff. I mean, we're just doing a little bit here and a little bit there to.
Right. And it, it's basically a replacement plan for what we currently have.
Right, 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 right. And, you know, I, it's, I would say it's definitely the case that, as Mr. Goian could attest, we, we need probably now more help at the elementary levels than we do at the other levels because there, we've made some progress at the other levels, a little bit. Not a lot, but a little bit. So.
Well, Stan, as you know, with the, think about it, was the SFFS money.
Yeah.
Where we finally were able to outfit the elementary schools with the bare minimum. And the cool thing about technology and that allotment for elementary is the Chromebooks especially have come down in price, but it's just a start.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So, what we would ask is if you need to see the budget in any other format that was in there, let us know. And then if you have any questions you'd specifically like addressed by the, the leadership team who will be here at the next meeting, let us know. It's always good if they have them beforehand. Obviously, you can ask them that night as well. They'll be here, but if they have it beforehand, it, it allows them to provide more information.
So, we're not gonna go over the gory details tonight?
Correct.
Okay. The only thing I would say, let me just throw one out at this point, I, I applaud the superintendent and the team for putting together the first time, I think, what to me looks like a real bona fide budget with some discussion of what it means, right? Narrative. I think that's, this is the best budget I've ever seen since I've been on the school committee, so I really applaud all of that. And I, I appreciate trying to tie it to our goal, level-one, right? I would try to encourage the leadership team, when we get briefed at least, to try to show a more explicit connection between we spend this, we get that, right? You know, performance-based budgeting.
Yeah. And Hutch did want it, we talked about that. Actually, we're gonna talk about Laura, Laurie Lycus, is that her name?
Yeah. Really, evidence indicates.
Yeah. But, you know, as we get to briefing, you know.
No, it's, again, it's, it's odd. We're having the, ah, sorry. We were having the discussion today regarding the timing of the budget and the timing of everything else. And it would be, it would be a serious mistake to disconnect the budget from the strategic plan because strategic plan should be driving the budget. However, the strategic plans developed pretty much during the summertime.
Mm-hmm.
And the budget, and so that the measurement pieces, and that's the work we're doing with Laurie Lycus, we have another session coming up, is connecting, how do we best connect the work we're doing in the budget and the measurements? But we understand that the measurements are typically taking place in the timeframe of the strategic plan. Which is September through June.
Yeah.
So, in some regards, you're, you're working with a half-a-year difference.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sort of that.
Yeah. And so, I asked her, I was emailing her yesterday because we decided on the date and the leadership team, I was emailing, I said, we, I want to spend some time with you regarding how to really best address that because we, we talk about the early measurement indicators and we're, whereas I think we're getting better, but we still have a ways to go. But we make a mistake if everything starts getting connected just to budget in the absence of talking also with the strategic plan. Strategic plan needs to drive the budget, yet it's also, they're, they're on a different timeline.
Okay. But to that point, the, it's a sort of, we're doing the lead-lag thing in the wrong order, right? The, the strategic plan is now lagging the budget. It should be the other way. So, the strategic plan you do in the summer should now drive the subsequent budget and we just have to get ahead of the curve on that.
We just have to get there.
The other thing that I would say to the, my point about trying to provide a little bit better linkage here in this budget, in the spirit of Mr. Mealy's, let's go to performance-based budgeting. It doesn't have to be, it could be qualitative at this level. You know, here's what we'd like to do, here's how we'd like to tie it to level one. We can't necessarily do that now, but here's where we're heading. So it could be just, you know, kind of more of a philosophical view of, here's what we'd like to see the links between the results and the budget. You know, we may not be able to make it right away because we have this lag time and all those other things we're working on. But sort of give us, you know, some idea of where you'd like to be heading, and what you'd like to see this be like in a year or two, or however long it takes us to get there. So, I'm good with that. I mean, this is like, gosh, so far ahead of any place we've ever been. And, you know, to read the narrative and really know what you're talking about is great. It's huge, huge.
I agree, this is very well presented. One thing I would question or wonder is, have we, since there are a few one-time purchases, so to speak, above the green line, have we exhausted other opportunities for grants or philanthropy to help us with those? And do they actually have to come out of the op budget?
Yeah, I think it's one of those areas you could always do better. I mean, we do try with regards to grants. We assign as much as we can to grants, you know, the stipends we talked about earlier, get paid out of grants. So as much as we can, I think the area where there's probably the most room for improvement would be what we've talked about before of an educational, what's the term that...
Foundation.
Foundation, thank you. It doesn't exist in North Andover, and that's something we might be able to tap into. It's hard to get it, it actually exists, but it just lies dormant, and has for a few years now. So that's a possibility.
And that may tie into Steve Nugent and Carla's work at the high school with an alumni association.
Yeah, that's, we started that conversation based on some conversation with a executive director in Newton of their ed foundation. He says, if you're going to start anywhere, start with the alumni, and Steve Nugent's been working on that this year. And we hope to bounce off, work off of that.
That's great, I'm thinking more about why would we want to own a van? Why would we want to take a van out of op? That type of thinking as well. I know that the top program has big, high value, but that might be something that, you know, have we thought about, or have we...
I think we'd have to look at where else it would kind of come from, and what those options would be.
Yeah, I agree. And that's not to say it's not... Yeah, exactly. And that's my point, I mean, I see the high value, I see why it's a priority for us, because it's huge in terms of cost avoidance and providing support, but it's a hard thing to have to buy a van as opposed to invest in ELL or other tutors or other things, so that's my only point. And again, this is a one-time purchase as opposed to recurring, so I understand that.
Mr. Theresa, any additional questions?
I know we have one last important piece of business to get to. Maybe we can talk about these dates and like, get the public out, get the knowledge out on this?
Oh, yeah, the hearing date, get that out quickly.
Yeah, so I think that was the first slide that was there, or maybe the second, I don't remember.
So we're going to meet next Thursday, the 22nd, for our deliberations, and I think the conversation was, we're going to move the public hearing from January 29th to January 26th?
Correct.
Correct, yes.
And the approval of the budget to the 29th.
To the 29th, okay. That'll be January 29th.
So we'll make sure that we try to get those updated on the website tomorrow.
Superintendent update and...
We moved the... The 22nd.
Yeah.
Move the 29th to the 26th, and the 5th to the 29th.
Added a meeting, basically, on the 26th. So that becomes 26th.
Yep. And 5th becomes the 29th.
Correct.
Of January.
Correct.
Okay.
We'll see the location, because the staff will be in this room, I think, on the 26th.
The new school building will not quite be done yet, so...
Although I was in the room today, and it looked great.
How's Mr. Mealy's office looking?
I noticed that his office seems to be coming along best at this time.
My office right now.
Superintendent's office, well, that's what we want to know. Okay, we're good.
Mrs. Warren, any questions at this point?
Uh, no.
I have a couple of quick questions. So, we've talked about the China exchange, is there any funds that we have allocated in this budget in anticipation of that being passed?
No, we would get ones...
I know that, but have we counted on those funds? Have we counted on two students, or seven students, or zero students?
From...
We're aiming for five, but we haven't counted on any.
There's nothing in the budget for those.
Correct.
Okay. If you could provide whether or not everybody wants it or not, but in the book, there's section D, which actually has the recommended school budgets by program. At the very end of that, the first page, you have the percent increase, and I believe that's fiscal year 15 to 16. Is it possible for you to just throw a fast column in there, so that I can see the increases between 11 and 12, 12 to 13, 13 to 14?
We can do that. That's easy enough.
All right, that'd be great. Yeah, or send it and I can deliver.
I'll send it, I'll try to print it out, it would be...
No, that's fine, if you can just shoot the data here, then I can do that myself.
And you want that for which one?
This page. Section D, page one.
Okay.
Just the first page, at this point. And if I, once I look at that, if I want to drill into other stuff, I'll just email you directly.
So, sort of along exactly the same one, let me just sort of piggyback on that. For me, when I look at the data that you've given us, I'm only concerned, I'm only interested in the stuff where there's an increase, all the, you know, so, on any of those sheets, there's probably two rows you need to explain to us, right? The ones that have a few percent increase. Everything else, we don't need, we don't care about, right? Because it's all zero or level or something.
Right.
Right? That would be the point. Anything we get briefed on would be just on the deltas.
Right. What I can do is I can add a column at the end, and you're just talking about FY 15 to 16, correct?
Definitely.
Right, I can add a column that has a note for if there's a change, a significant change in that item. Why?
Yep, exactly. Because it's, you know, it's usually two or three lines on the page.
One of the things that I seem to remember from last year is that, and I don't remember if it was the entire leadership team or not, but when you met, you talked about, you know, what would you do if you had a level services budget? What would next year's budget look like? And I'm just curious, did you go into those meetings anticipating a three and a half percent? Or was this, we went in kind of saying, what do you need, and it happened to come out at about three and a half?
Yeah, it was different this year than last. I mean, we've done that exercise three or four years in a row now, and frankly, the story's the same every year. We only have so much space, and, you know, the existing staff keeps our class size wherever it is, to decrease it wouldn't make sense, and there's no room to increase it. So, moving from one year to the next, we pretty much have very little margin to work with. We take our existing staff, and we're probably a little low, not a little low, we're low on our materials line items and, you know, other allocation line items. So we move all that forward, and that costs us three percent, and we knew we were going to have the three and a half, so that left a half percent to work with. So what we focused on is that half percent. What would you do at your level or at your location to enhance education? And that's where we came up with that list.
So the piece that's kind of above the green, wherever that was, page 10 or so in the budget packet, I'm trying to scroll through, there we go, nine. So was that collectively decided upon by the administration team, by the central office?
The list was compiled by the leadership team.
Okay.
Right, and then prioritized.
And then based upon that, you have now kind of approved that?
Yeah, then we meet in the closer quarters in the central office. And, you know, try to vet what we've heard from everybody, and then come up with that, and then go back to the leadership team and say, this is what I think really makes sense. And everybody understands you can't have everything.
Sorry to interrupt, but the biggest struggle with who's going to determine that priority list, that we found, is that you've got one high school principal, you've got one middle school principal, and you've got five elementary principals, and then others. So, elementary would dominate if you took it to a vote, or even if you had a discussion. So what we try to do is get their feedback, and then as a central office leadership team, create the priorities that address all levels, and then bring it back to the leadership team and say, here it is, can you live with this? And that's the point we reach.
And just to add on, I think you guys saw last year, I think for the first time in a long time, that level of trust we built across, because principals have to advocate for their building. But at the same time, I want to say that people really had an open mind, and we were honest with each other the last two years, of advocating for your building, but also seeing the whole picture, pre-K through 12.
Well, the two most amazing things that happened in the last budget, curriculum coordinators and assistant principals.
Cost neutral.
Cost neutral.
That was going to be my comment. I mean, what I liked about the way we did program-based budgeting was, people had to do the critical thinking about, what would you do with two percent less? And I'm hoping in the wish listing, we also provided an opportunity to reflect on what isn't working, and what do we want to stop doing.
Yeah, and then, like I said, having done that for the last three or four years, it was extremely difficult to come up with anything new. And maybe if you don't do it for a year or two, then, you know, things can present themselves again.
I guess the question, let me ask my question, which is similar to Mr. Gross's question, but it's a different kind of a contingency plan. So what happens if all the rhetoric that we read in the Globe notwithstanding, that they do have to reduce chapter 70, or, you know, local aid? Then what? Then what do we do, right? I mean, we're not guaranteed we're going to get all the money that we've already programmed into this budget. And it's much more likely, that's at least as likely as the sped problem.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, I mean, we've assumed that, you know, the numbers we've assumed for what the state has told us, had told us they were going to give us, may or may not come true. So then what? It could be, who knows what that's going to be?
It would be different, because, you know, a budget is a moment in time. And if that happened, we'd have to adjust accordingly.
I mean, the town would have to adjust, but we'd have to make our own adjustments.
Yep, exactly.
So I'm just saying, that to me is really the thing that's on the table for me, because, you know, everybody's like, oh, yeah, we have local, we're fine with that, we won't, you know, but as we've talked about over and over, they keep one pot that they can talk about, neutral, and then they cut it someplace, yeah, but we're only going to give you 65% on reimbursement for it, you know, you're like, what? The other question I have is, when I look at the totals, that chart you had up there before, by area, there seems to be a disparity between elementary schools, middle and high school. Elementary schools, on a percent basis, seem to be getting less. So on the equity rule, how did that happen, or what was that all about? I'm just curious. It's like, high school and middle school were getting, like, the first digit was four, elementary school, first digit, three.
Yeah, and it's really a product of where teachers are on the salary schedule. You know, if you've got more, if you've got more teachers, let's say at the elementary level, who are at the top of the salary schedule, their increase is not going to be as much as teachers who are moving up a step and getting the cost of living increase to the salary schedule. So it could be a factor, that, we'd have to look at it a little bit more to see why.
No, I mean...
And that's the biggest factor in all of our budget anyway, so that's where it comes down to.
I'm just saying, you know, it just, it would be nice to have that as part of the story. I don't, I'm not saying it's not a right or wrong answer, it's just, why? It's like an award.
I think we can drill into that in part of the conversations next week as well, so...
Also, try to be transparent on curriculum proposal changes, if there are any, based on the budget.
We kept that in mind, and we weren't anticipating, so...
All right, thank you, Mr. Mealy, for helping and assisting Dr. Hutchinson with that. So now I'd like to go back to old business, which would be, old business, A, the superintendent's contract, and we have a surprise guest, Dr. Price, who is here as well. So, I had said earlier that we met in executive session regarding the contract for the superintendent and Dr. Hutchinson, and we voted in executive session unanimously, five to nothing, to vote for the contract. We now need to do that in a public session. Before I do that, I just want to highlight a couple of quick things. In the contract, it is a three-year contract. The starting salary is $176,000, and other than that, most of the other pieces, I believe, are consistent with past contracts that we have had as well. So I don't know if anyone has any additional...
Not only with prior contracts, but also with the rest of the supervision team. So it's fairly consistent with the rest of the other contracts, so I think is a very important statement as well.
Okay, so I would, I guess, entertain a motion to publicly approve the contract for Dr. Price.
I make a motion to approve the contract that we've been presented for Dr. Jennifer Price to be the superintendent of the North Andover Public Schools.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All right, is there any additional discussion or conversation?
Nope.
I think it's, it's going to be a great, great year, a great three years at least.
I will make a comment, I am excited to see Dr. Price come to North Andover, starting in July 1. I'm excited to be, at this point, in the contract process, after the, I don't know how many emails back and forth and conversations. So I just want to, I'm sorry, as are you.
No, no, I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate your leadership on the contract negotiations. You did a lot of work on it, you went back and forth with Dr. Price several times, you kept us informed. I thought the discussion we had last week in executive session was excellent, and all owed to your leadership on that.
You're here.
Thank you.
Agreed.
So I would, all in favor, I would like to do a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Limper.
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Aye.
Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Theresa?
Aye.
And I am a yes as well, so, yes, congratulations. We have signed copies, so a copy for you to sign, and a pen, all right?
You two are supposed to sit at the table, like they do when the president signs, you know, and Gilli then takes all these photos.
You might want to turn that way, though, Dr. Price.
You got to move over, get out of the frame, there you go, yeah, there you go. No offense intended, but...
I was just about to shoot myself, but I'm not going to do that.
You've already signed?
Pretend like you're signing. Yeah, there's a photo op, you know, come on, pretend like you're doing something.
Yeah, I think this should be...
Mr. Mealy, you've got a better camera than I do. Better get up there. Five S's, five S's, that's good.
Are we signing? Wait, 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 move to the last page, I'll look at that for a minute.
Thank you.
I'm so excited, thank you.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
While you're still here, Dr. Price, I just wanted to also thank the search subcommittee for all the great work that they did, and for all the good work you did with us, right? Helping us learn and know more. So I really appreciate all the effort that went into this, and I'm so glad you showed up just in time.
Your committee was very impressive, and I have said this to the school committee before, you know, the fact that you, Stan, did this without the formal support of a search consultant, has saved the North Andover Public Schools and the town a lot of money, and very impressive work. And I just wanted, you just guys did a great job. And I do appreciate the speeding up of the process, and I'm sorry if that created any problems for the town, but hopefully that will be long forgotten.
I think in the end, we're happy that we did that. And I would also, and I'm sure this is not a thought you haven't already had, which is, put all those people on your interview list for your entry plan, because they're all important people in our town.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I'm very excited.
When do we start the barbecue?
Excuse me?
When do we start the barbecue?
July 2nd.
Oh, okay, great.
So we're going to jump back to the agenda, which is relatively light from this point. There's no new business, is there any public comment?
I'm wishing I had earlier, because it's related to, Mark Stenson, who had him on a road. It's related to the discussion we had on the Cambridge Institute group. So, I was here last week, and I was curious, because I work at Central Catholic, we have international students from China, a bunch of them, about 30 of them. So I went and talked with our admissions office about, you know, who do they use? And they said, there's hundreds of these companies out there, Chinese students coming over to America for education is a popular trend now. So they said, be careful, because there's a lot of them. There's people that are just trying to make money, there are some that are relatively new. So I went and I did some research on the Cambridge Institute, and I was a little bit unsatisfied with the fact that if you go to their website, you cannot find a list of schools that they partner with. And I don't know how we found them, if they approached us, if we approached them, if we talked with any schools that utilize them, but I couldn't find a list. I went to the group that Central Catholic uses, and right on the top of the website, it says, "Our Partner Schools," and you can see a list of 30 most schools that utilize them, and reviews and stuff, missing from Cambridge. The other thing is, their name, as it's written on their website, is different from the name that's in their contract. I think they changed their name, which makes me think, I don't know if they're using an old contract. And then I looked for reviews online for people that were using them, couldn't find any, but I found this website called Glass Door, which is a place for employees to kind of rate their companies. I found employee ratings of this company, and some of them were quite alarming, I have a packet here, I highlighted some stuff, but more often than not, there was comments, and there's over 30 of them, this company is in it just for money, the administrator, the CEO just wants money, total unethical dictator style of leadership. I'll pass this around. Company is 100% motivated by money, they ask you to do things that are ethically wrong, have been asked by the CEO to place international students into households where families had